Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Yeah, no, it just started happening last week, so I called the dealer. He said, oh, the grain's low. I'm like, kind of coincidental, because it just went for recall two weeks ago.
Linda, you know what they say, some people would say that living on Prudence Island year round is really a dog's life.
Wait, wait a second, it took you forty seconds to come up with that?
Always too busy joy clicking to unmute all of the stuff.
You had to turn off all your YouTube videos and all that, okay.
I'm one hundred percent focused on this annual event.
I'm disappointed, I'm disappointed that I couldn't go over there on the police boat.
I know.
You obviously haven't seen the bay and the outside weather today.
That's true, it's, it's rough out there.
Yeah, took my boat out of the water last week.
I want to ride on that new Bristol Fireboat.
Oh, yeah, does, yeah, doesn't it look, yeah, it's beautiful.
I've never seen outboards that big.
Neither.
So media alert, everyone, don't, don't mute yourself and then take a bite of your muffin because you thought you would. It doesn't work well.
You look like a chipmunk.
Great.
Those are the cheek implants.
Very smart. Okay.
A cheek implant, is this covered by health insurance or is that a?
Shouldn't be, for goodness sake.
They have cheek implants to the other side, too.
That's right.
Only, just saying.
Only if they're medically necessary, Len.
This conversation just went in an awkward direction.
South.
South, very good.
I'm gonna have to mute, my wife is groaning in the background.
Mr. Roberts, we good? All right, I think we're good.
Where's Jim Seventy? Is he here? No?
See him.
Is he?
Said he was coming. Maybe I can text him.
He's on as an attendee.
He is, okay.
He's online, even a link, I know, I saw him on the link.
He's, he's online. He's just not.
Oh, but maybe on his phone?
Yeah, he's just not on as a participant, no, he's on Zoom, but he's not, he didn't follow the participant link.
Well, you know what, he went to the, he followed the wrong link, which I almost did. He's on the regular Zoom link.
Right.
Can he participate?
Just to panelists.
He's, he's not on the panelist link, I don't know, this.
Attendee list.
Yeah.
Now he's, he's been.
He's there.
Now he's in two places.
Good morning, everyone, welcome to our Saturday morning council meeting regarding Prudence Island. We'll begin with the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our way.
States of America.
America.
To the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
And justice for all.
Thank you all. Hey, I'm just gonna just touch base on a few ground rules. For those of you participating online, if you're on a mobile device through the meeting, you can raise your hand. You can click on the icon to raise your hand, it will acknowledge you for questions. When, if you're at home calling in on a cell phone, it's star six to mute and unmute your phone. And star nine will indicate that you have a question and we'll call upon you. When called upon, please state your name and address for the downwind. And we'll begin now.
Ms. Ujafusa?
Present.
Ms. Abbott? Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Captain?
Here.
Mr. Kelly? Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Here. Thank you all, so again, you know, this, this meeting is, is specific to Prudence Island. The agenda is set up to discuss old business related to Prudence Island as well as new business. But I'd like to do is begin with the old business number one, which is the Prudence Island internet, internet update is Art. Or you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm here, thank you. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you guys for allowing me to do this. The first thing I'd like to talk about is the Portsmouth Tower on Headley Street. Just to let everybody know that the tower has been ordered and is currently in the process of being built. The tower that we're going to be erecting, as you know, is a freestanding tower, which means there aren't any guy wires to stabilize the tower. And although it seemed that it wouldn't take long to acquire a tower of this nature, others more involved than meets the eye. Each tower is specifically engineered for where they're being placed, so the factors include, you know, the maximum wind speeds for our area, ice loading, the weight of the antennas, square footage of the antennas, and the quality of the soil. For those reasons, the towers take between eight and twelve weeks to be delivered from the factory. With that being said, we anticipate the delivery of this tower to be around the end of November. When we install the base of the tower and the concrete, it takes about twenty-eight days for the concrete to properly cure. So a realistic expectation of January first is when we think that we'll have service for the island, and that'll be, you know, obviously for the east side of Prudence. But it is also going to include coverage to the Merrill, Alden, Helen, Hornbine, and Longview avenues. So we're happy about that. Moving on to the west side of Prudence, I'm pleased to say that the tower for the residents of the west side is being delivered to the island this week. We anticipate that we'll begin service from that tower on November fourteenth. Coverage from that tower will be Bay, Providence, Francis, Concord, and Atlantic avenues, as well as some parts of Broadway. Speaking of Broadway, we've been having some conversations with members of the school board about getting internet to the school. And we have proposed putting a tower behind the school that would link to that tower on the west side. So if this is approved by the school board, that tower has already been delivered to the island and it's ready to be erected. I know there's still some areas that need coverage, such as Daniel Avenue, as well as the top of Pier Road and Sunset Hill. We don't have a timeline at this moment for when we're going to have service there. But I will say that those areas are very high priority for us. And we're going to continue to test different delivery methods to achieve coverage there. And then we'll, you know, update the residents in that area as soon as possible. That's all I have for this update and really appreciate the time and the opportunity to, to let you guys know what's going on.
Thank you, Art. Any, are there any questions? For Art?
I can tell you from personal experience that my coverage and my support here in an optimal location at Sandpoint on the hill, I'm still working for three, four days a week, as most of you still know. And my coverage here has been absolutely flawless, I have had absolutely zero outage or impact in the, I lost track now. It seems like six, seven, eight months that I've been fully committed and it has been working flawlessly. System could not be better. I'm running a consistent hundred ninety-five to a hundred megabits download full time. And my working experience has been like nothing I've ever experienced in the seven years I've lived here. So I'm going to totally suck up to Art because I think he's done a heck of a job. I can tell you from personal observation, we on the island know who's here and when they're here, when they come and when they go. I mean, that's all we have to do, right? And, and Art spends a significant part of his day while we here on the island supporting his own current and prospective customers. So I wanted to just say thank you very much.
Good to hear. Thanks, Hap, and Art, thank you. Okay, let's move on to old business number two, it's National Grid Stats Report update. Doc, can you give us an update?
No problem, good morning, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, there were three items that, and actually, I'm sorry, good morning, for those out there, my name's Jacques Affon, so I'm the National Grid Community and Customer Manager for the East Bay and the Quinick Island areas. I am the, the account manager, the liaison for the town of Portsmouth and Prudence Island. Anything related to National Grid that needs attention, assistance, I'm there to help. And I believe I attended the two thousand and eighteen Prudence Island Town Council meeting, which I think some of the, some of the items that came up then are going to be updated today. And I was asked to provide an update on three items, one was the Nat Pond Pole relocation, extending into the north side of the, the island. And I think I have a question on that one, so we'll get into that in a minute. And then also the recent reliability concerns. So just to start off, and when I attended the two thousand and eighteen meeting, local residents expressed concern with the pole line. It's about eight poles that goes through Nat Pond or near Nat Pond in the condition that they were in. After that meeting, operations and engineering went out there and they reviewed and they agreed that those have to be addressed, whether replacing, replacing them in kind and in the same location or relocating them. The current design is looking to relocate the line and that's going to be pretty much going around Narragansett and Nick Farm Road. And currently that project, it's, we're coordinating with the Prudence Island Conservancy. We need an agreement from them to relocate the pole on their property, so we're currently working with them. We had a call with them in early July, we had a site visit with them end of July. And based on that meeting, we have an updated design that we're going to be providing, sending to them for review. And if things go well, I'm hoping we'll be relocating that in the near future. Any, any questions on the pole line relocation on Nat Pond? Okay, and while we're up there, it was, I'm sorry?
We do have a question, while we have a hand up. Is it Tricia or Ross?
Yes, hi. I'm the lady that brought it up at the town council meeting in two thousand and eighteen, so we're going back two years. One, I don't understand why they came out, did the survey, mocked everything over a year ago. I guess I'm concerned about the length of time it's taken for the project to get going. I mean, the survey markers have since been washed away by tides, mowed over by lawnmowers. How can we get this to be remified before we lose the power in a northeastern, in the middle of the world? We are full-time islanders up there, we rely on our energy for heating and water. And I just don't understand why it's taken so long.
Well, it's, it's a combination of, well, first things first, I'm not here to provide any excuses for the, either things taking too long or for reliability issues and so forth, I'm not here to provide any, any excuses. But it, it is somewhat of a process with respect to getting the right personnel to review, to get, gather information, to contact the right abutters, the right easement, right owners, property owners, get the right approvals, and, and again, it's, it's, in fairness to the Prudence Island Conservancy, it is on us right now to provide an update on that last meeting, the updated design and so forth. So it's, that's something where I was in contact with the Conservancy recently, going to provide that to them pretty soon, I'm hoping this week, next week. And that's something where it, it is one of our priorities to get done. But I agree, I wish this is, I wish this is something that would have been done yesterday, if not a year ago. But it is one of our priorities, and again, it is something where it was brought up two thousand and eighteen, it was reviewed, it does need attention, and it will, it will be working on it and hopefully soon to relocate it.
Well, thank you, and I really hope it doesn't go back down to the bottom of the pile, because it's something that needs to be addressed before the accident happens, not after.
Nope, I, I agree, and there's a few of you that have my contact information, if you have any questions, you could always contact me directly to get updates on the, the pole line relocation.
Okay, thank you.
Could we get your address, please?
Eight nine six Nick Farm Road, Prudence Island, Rhode Island.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I thought you were asking for my address for a second, I'm like, wait. And, and if there's, if, if any, and seriously, it's like I, I mentioned a few seconds ago, if there's any other questions or comments even after this, again, it's, the town has my contact information, I know there's a few of you that have my contact information, more than willing to give updates aside from this town council meeting. Are there any other questions on, on NAGA Nat Ponds?
I'm seeing any, no.
Okay, while we're up there, I think also in two thousand and eighteen, there was a, a question about extending, extending a voltage or extending a line north. I think from Nat Pond, kind of in that area, we have what's called a single-phase line that goes up to the northern part of the island that feeds all the single-phase service customers. I think, I'm, I'm thinking that the question that was asked for an update on that was if we have any intention to extend three-phase, which is what you see on main roads, what we call the spine of the feeder, the, the primary three-phase. There's no plans right now to extend three-phase all the way to the end of the island, there, there really is no need, because there's no customer, there's no three-phase customer on the northern part of the island. So there's no, there's no plans or no intention to, to extend three-phase to the northern part of the island. If you look at other parts of the island, they're also all three-phase. If you look at the western part, the southern part, they're all single-phase lines that go out and feed those customers there. Just some numbers, three-phase is about three miles worth of three-phase on the island, and single-phase is about ten miles on the island. So it's primarily a single-phase kind of system that we have there. So as of right now, there's no need, there's no expectation, there's no, no plan to extend three-phase to the northern part of the island. Unless a customer does come to us and they require three-phase service, we wouldn't be doing that. Which leads me into the reliability of, of the area. In two thousand and eighteen, the summer of two thousand and eighteen, we had reliability issues and concerns on the northern part of the island. That's where I attended the town council meetings September fifteenth, provided an update, we were installing a single-phase, single-phase voltage regulator to help fix those reliability concerns in the northern part of the island. We did complete that in late September, early fall of two thousand and eighteen. I'd like to think that there were no issues afterwards in two thousand and nineteen, I didn't hear of any other or additional reliability concerns in the northern part of the island. So for us, that fixed, fixed that reliability issues in two thousand and, from two thousand and eighteen. But if we fast forward to this summer, we had, we had an increased number of, of reliability calls and concerns. This was more just south of where we installed that single-phase voltage regulator, I believe it was around Daniels Ave, Fairview Ave. It was around that area that we experienced reliability concerns. We did try to do, I'm not going to call it a quick fix, but something, something quick, the island experienced an outage, we tried to increase the voltage of the entire island on that outage. It did increase a little bit, but not enough, I think there were still reliability concerns afterwards. So similar to, to two thousand and eighteen, we have plans to install a three-phase voltage regulator more southern to Daniels and Fairview on Narragansett Ave, which that should fix the reliability issues being experienced this past summer. We currently have the pole already on the island, we have it scheduled for October twenty-sixth to have the three-phase voltage regulator installed. And again, it's, we're going to install it, assess, monitor the area, and of course, I think this is something we'll have to wait until next summer. And then based on that, take proper actions if needed afterwards. Which would, I think, for me, I, I think that would, in talking to engineering, would require a much larger study.
There is a question.
Sure.
Hi, this is Pat Rossi, again, eight nine six Nick Farm Road. By not having the three-phase go all the way up to the north end, that limits people for participating in any kind of solar buyback. I've looked into doing it, I'm fortunate enough to have Thirty Acre Farm, where we would love to put a solar turbine in, but because there's no access to three-phase, we're not able to, that's number one. The other thing is, we also do welding, we have a garage, we also run the ferry companies where there's steel boats. So many times, we are doing maintenance, et cetera, on different things. And the welders do not work correctly during the heat of the summer because of the power shortage, et cetera. So to say nobody is in need of three-phase on the north end is incorrect. Now, have I jumped up and down about that? No, I have not, but I'm taking this opportunity to tell you that, yes, three-phase would be used up there, especially when you're looking at solar panels, wind turbine, because we're all trying to lower our footprint. Thank you.
No, that, that's, that's a fair and valid question, and just to respond to that, it's, it's, we treat every customer the same, so it's, this has happened in other areas where customers do want three-phase. But again, that is, it's, we don't proactively just go out there and extend three-phase into different areas. It's based on customer demand, customer request. So if you do have an official request, you would have to call our eight hundred number, put in a request, it would go to design engineering, and then, again, there would be costs associated with it and so forth. I think, I think a few years ago, the town looked at going three-phase or installing three-phase in a certain area in Prudence Island. I think when the cost came back, it just, it just wasn't, I believe it just wasn't right, or it just didn't make sense. I think it ended up being single-phase, but I don't have all the specifics on that, so. But again, it's, unless there's, and, and I'm not doubting that there isn't a need personally or locally, but unless we get an official request from the customer, we don't know that there is a need or a request. And again, we'd have to follow that process to get an official request from a customer, call then, work request created, and then again, it would go through the, to the overall process, which is the way we treat any type of request for a service upgrade, a service change, whatever may be across Rhode Island, this is how we treat every request from every resident, commercial, residential business.
Jacques.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Question for you on that process of submitting a request for that increased level of service and the associated costs. Are those costs borne by the requesting customer or by a national grid or both?
It really depends on what we call revenue justification, so depending on the size, there could be some construction and aid contribution. This is something where it's outside of my realm of expertise, but I think primarily it would be borne the burden on the customer requesting. And if anybody has any questions on, on that contact number to call, unfortunately, it can be a little painful sometimes calling the eight hundred number, but that is the way to start the process to either get a service upgrade, a service change, or whatever may be.
Do you know where the October twenty-sixth installation for the three-phase regulator is going to be installed?
And looking at the map, I don't have the exact location, but I think it's on Narragansett Ave near the fire station, but I can get you a more exact location if, if needed.
No, that's fine, I wasn't sure if it was going to be all the way north up in that Daniel Avenue area or someplace else, so it sounds like it's much farther to the south.
Yeah, so similar to what we did in two thousand and eighteen, we were installing the voltage regulator south of the reliability issues, similar in this situation, where we have the reliability issues in Daniels, Fairview, we're going further south to install the voltage regulator, which would then, again, help the reliability concerns going north, or in that area. And I think I see a question there.
A question's coming in, yeah. Is it, was it answered? Just, it's just, thank you. As a comment, thank you as a resident of Holbrook Ave, I appreciate the update on low voltage.
President, I have a question.
Sure.
Right, so in light of the fact that Ms. Rossi is asking about an upgrade in order to create a energy, environmentally friendly energy system, does National Grid, or are you aware of any other entities that might provide funding? Some sort of grant to promote?
I would, I would definitely check and look into Office of Energy Resources, I, I believe they have a, different programs out there. Aside from that, I'm not aware of, of, of any, but I do have subject matter experts within National Grid can probably answer that question a little bit better than I'm doing right now. But there, but there are, but there are incentives, programs out there. And again, it, it is one of those things that I do see a lot of developers out there, whether large or small, depending on where the property is located, sometimes it's, it's a home run win for them, because there's already three-phase right outside their property, it's an easy connection, and other times, they're doing a lot of work of installing a, a long pole line, three-phase, whatever may be, to connect to the system, so. And I think that's where, after starting the process of putting in an official request, the developer, the customer will get more information from National Grid and other, and other, and other areas that really make, that will, hopefully will help them make the decision, if, if it's the right decision for them going forward.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Doc.
No problem, I think I touched upon each three, is there anything else or any other questions that are out there?
Just checking, just, oh, okay, no, I am not seeing anything, nothing from any counselors, panelists. Okay, thank you, Doc.
Thank you, have a great day, everyone.
Thank you. All right, on to old business number three, it's an update on the boat ramp repairs, Mr. Woodhead.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council, I'll give you guys an update, I'll start with the Sandpoint Dock and let the Prudence Island residents know that we went out to bid in July for the repairs and redesign of Sandpoint Dock, and we awarded the contract in August. We've signed, uh, signed off on the plans for the floating dock, it's forty feet long. The company that's building the floating dock at this time is, uh, the timeframe is about ten more weeks for delivery. The timeframe is due to the length of the dock, and they don't want to transport the dock over the roadway until it's completely cured and to avoid any cracks forming on the float. Regan Construction is a contractor that'll be installing the dock in, in, they estimate two weeks after the, all the parts are in for completion. So if everything works out, we should be completed around January twenty twenty-one, weather permitting. My other, my next update is going to be for the Homestead Boat Ramp. After the last meeting, I went down, I inspected the ramp, I saw no major issues with the ramp. Our crew's been down there at the ramp many times to clean it off, and they had not noticed any changes other than normal wear and tear. I was over on Prudence this week, and I looked again, there are some cracks on the slab, and I took some photos to document that, to see if there's any further cracking or settling in the slabs in the coming months. At this point, there are no plans for replacements on this ramp, and then this concludes my update of the boat ramp repairs, if anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Brian. I think we're good, I'm not seeing any questions or answers.
I think I might be able to address that a little bit more, I've spoken with the individuals that raised this issue in the first place. And while everything you've said is spot on the money, Brian, the only thing that I would say is a lot of the, a lot of the conclusions are going to depend on the tide and when you look at it. Because if you look at that ramp in a low tide, not even going to the extremes of the moon tide, the lowermost end of that ramp is, has sections of those, it's basically preformed concrete slabs that have been laid down at some point, if my memory is correct. And some of those have actually broken away and chunks of them are actually missing. And if you are trying to haul a boat or, or retrieve a boat at low tide, especially if it's a fairly good-sized boat, it's more, it's a bit of a challenge, to say the least. So that's the only, the only observation that I would give you on why this came up in the first place.
Okay, sounds good, Hap, I'll, we'll take another look at it, at like a moon-low tide, so we'll see what we can assess at that time.
And I'll, I'll pass the same thought back to the concerned individuals as well and have them do the same, so it'll save you the aggravation, and, and see if they can get some of their own photographs at, at their convenience and get those sent over to you as well.
Oh, that'd be great, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you, Hap, thank you, Brian, and it's actually good to hear if, if the folks that are over there can, can get some photos, that would help, that would help Ryan out a lot. Okay. No questions, no comments. Let's move on to new business. The first item is an update on the Prudence Island Bay transport and policies due to COVID from A and R Marine. Do we have?
That would be Patty if she's still here.
Yeah. I saw, I thought I was quickly scrolling. There was another.
Steve on here? No.
All right. Well, we can, we can come back to that if.
I can fill in a little bit of the history on this if I, if I may, in the absence of anybody officially from A and R. There have been a, obviously, the ferry is, is, and again, keep in mind, I'm outsider, not representing A and R. I'm just talking by what I know or don't know, as the case might be. They're following published guidelines and regulations around capacity on the boat, especially for those not in vehicles, walk-on passengers in enclosed cabins, social distancing, mask wearing, et cetera. And as a consequence, the main cabin in the large ferry, the, in the, in use today, the interior cabin is limited to something like six or 10 people, I think, at the max. And again, that's not due to anything A and R is doing. That's the, the regulations that they've been provided. The issue that's come up is, and I can tell you from my own personal experience, we've had some challenges going on at home with medical lectures that have required a whole lot more travel on the ferry than normal. And we are walk-on passengers with a car in Bristol as well. There have been, in my personal case, I think, two separate examples. When we did not think to book a ticket online in advance, showed up in the morning for the 8:30 departure and were unable to purchase a ticket to get off island for a doctor's appointment or whatever because the boat had exceeded walk-on capacity, no seats on the boat, as it were. And there have been other people that have been stuck in similar situations. And it's obviously raised a fair bit of aggravation when you've got a, a serious appointment for a serious condition and you're stuck getting off the island for the day. Because obviously, if you can't, if you don't have a late morning boat, you're out of luck until the next day. You can't very well go off at four o'clock in the afternoon. So I think that's what is behind this particular frustration and the desire to have A and R revisit. We sent over, I forwarded over to the council, the supporting documentation A and R provided me that covered all of this. And it was mostly just a, an opportunity to put a line in the agenda here to allow the general public that are in attendance today to understand that this is not an A and R issue. They're not being, they're not just, they're not just being difficult. Their hands are tied based on Department of Health and, and other regulations restricting what they can and cannot do. Is there a solution to get around this? Sure. We're going to have a vaccine by election day, right? So that'll solve the problem. He said with his tongue in cheek. Anyway, I'll shut up now before I get in trouble.
Well, we had, we, we did have a couple of hands come up from, okay, so Evan is started. How about, let's go to Patricia. Let's go back to Patricia Ross.
Um, hi. Ethan is supposed to be on. He was trying to sign on. I don't know if you see him.
He's back on. Do you want us to switch to him?
Yes, please do.
Okay. Ethan? Oh, he's muted. Ethan, you need to unmute yourself.
Down at the bottom.
All right. Ethan, can you hear us?
Yeah.
All right, we got you. Okay, go ahead.
Hey, can everybody hear me?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Yeah. So guidelines have stayed the same from what you can see there that we provided since March for the walk-on passengers, vehicle, in-riding passengers. We can't differentiate between the two. We did speak with Department of Health and DOT back in March about this issue because it is pretty unique to our operation, and there was no budging there. So I don't see that being able to be resolved soon. However, we've recommended on our website to all residents, in particular, please make your reservations at least one week in advance, if possible. That should, shouldn't be an issue, especially now that we're heading into our slower season. But you know, those cases where you call on a Thursday wanting Friday reservations during the middle of the summer, that's definitely an issue. We saw a lot, and it was unfortunate. And yeah, the only way around it is to get those reservations in at least one week in advance, two if you can. And that's about all we can do so far. We've had no issues on the boat due to COVID, and we hope that continues.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions, comments? Okay. And so we can move on to, to the, to the open forum portion of our morning. Next, it's the, the open forum discussion, Q and A for Prudence Island issues. The first item is a request for hazardous waste to school full event on Prudence Island.
Yep. Yeah. Council President, members of the council. I can give the, the Prudence Island residents a little update about this, and also to the council. I did talk to David, who is now taking over for Eco Depot from Joe Rotella. The problem is, they, they just finalizing their 2021 schedule, and they had to scale back collection sites for Rhode Island and also a Quinick Island. This is, the, the new collection sites will be posted in January. He did say that I would be able to put in a request for Prudence Island if they want to do an Eco Depot for a 2022 calendar year, but my request would have to be put in, in May, just so they can finalize all their collection sites. And if this is something the council would like me to do, I'm more than happy to put the request in in May to round resource recovery in the Eco Depot to David to see if they, they can get approved. So it's up to the council what they want me to do.
But that would be for, that would be for 2022, nothing next year for 2021, as far as you know.
Yeah, correct. Because they're, because they're just finalizing their plan right now for 2021, and they pretty much have the same locations as they did last year. And believe it or not, the only thing they have on a Quinick Island is Newport. They've even cut out Portsmouth. We used to have it at the high school, so they cut out our collection site too. And now they cut out Middletown, so then they're only doing Newport on Eastern Beach for a Quinick Island. But I could put a request in, in May of 2021 for a calendar year 2022 to see if they can go over to Prudence.
Could we also, could we try the request for, for Portsmouth as well?
I, I, absolutely, I could. I mean, I talked to Joe Rotella before I found out that he wasn't running anymore, and he said Portsmouth was a great site. We had a lot of collection in Portsmouth. So I could put in both requests for Prudence Island and Portsmouth High School.
I would say let's, let's do that. Let's put in the request for, for both sites and see what we can do.
That sounds great. I'll put the request in in May. I'll put it on my calendar.
Brian, when you put in the request, can you also put in a, a, a date for it? So like for Prudence Island, obviously, it would be beneficial to have it when many of, have, if you're going to go out on a limb, but you want to see that during the summer months? If possible, when more of the residents are there?
I, I can put that in for the summer months. I'll have to work with A and R because the, the tides for coming on and coming off on the weekends, because we had a problem last time we went over there. We, we went over on a high tide, but then they came off. It was a low tide, and they couldn't get Clean Harbors to get off the island. They had to wait for a couple of days to get the boat off. So I had to, it's going to be a little scheduling with A and R just to get everything coordinated for the summer months. But we, we can, I can work with them to find out what a good date would be.
All right. Hap, you're muted.
Thank you. It was two years ago when we had our last Prudence Island trip over here. I could be wrong on that, but I believe it was at least two years ago. And now if we have to wait until 2022 before our next opportunity, that's going to be a solid four years before we have had a chance to unload all of this hazardous materials. Is there any chance at all that something can be done to try to get a special dispensation with them to schedule something for 2021?
I think all we can do is ask.
I'm sorry?
I mean, I mean, it sounds like, it, it sounds like they've already made their, their schedule for 2021. I mean, why?
Well, I'm sure if the appropriate financing was available, they'd be more than happy to come out on an as-needed or as-one-off basis. No?
I, I don't know. I think we can look into it and, and see what, what the cost might be for a special, you know, a special event like that.
I would appreciate that, and I'm sure the residents would as well.
We'll look into it.
Thank you.
All right. No, no other questions or comments on that. All right. The next item is a discussion on hazard or hazards to navigation in the Homestead mooring and the possibility of the town asking EDM to help with remediation action.
The harbor master is not in this week. He will look into it. And, but if you have specific on what exactly is going on, you would appreciate it.
Yeah, Brian Peters is on the line. So maybe I'll pass this concern on to Brian Peters.
Chief Peters is on the line if you'd like to speak about it. Hap, if you know what's going on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I was deliberately waiting to see if the individual that raised the issue in the first place was online and prepared to speak about it. Absent that, I will add my two cents. Directly south of the Prudence Island Variety and the old ferry landing and the, the old dock that's gradually returning to Mother Nature, directly south of that, there is a mooring field that pretty much runs the, almost the entire length of the east side of Prudence. But in the vicinity of those first two or three moorings, and on the shore side of those, there is apparently a very large piece of what appears to be old dock material, a large timber piling maybe that is waterlogged on the bottom. And apparently, to those people who are using those moorings in a low water situation, they're concerned that the size of this particular obstacle may pose a problem to the boaters. The locals have dropped a small float. The locals can remember or recognize where this obstacle happens to be. But that's the, some, that's the essence of the, is this thing is there. Nobody knows quite where it came from, how it got there, but can it be removed? And if so, what can do?
Thank you. I'll, I'll pass it on to the harbor master. He'll go up there and investigate that, and we can hopefully take care of that issue.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Okay. There's, we do have a question or a comment back to Ms. Rossi. Just got to unmute Ms. Rossi. You need to unmute yourself.
I'm trying. All right. Here we go. I'm on the Portsmouth Harbor Management Committee, and I've not heard of any report coming to us. I know there is a fund through the state of Rhode Island Boat Registry to handle wreckages that have been abandoned, et cetera. So it might fall under that. But they should definitely get a report to the committee who can help Bruce jump on this and maybe find state funds to remove it.
Now, what's the name of that organization that may have money you mentioned?
Well, you gotta send a letter to the Portsmouth Harbor Management Committee?
Yeah, I got that.
Through our monthly meeting that Bruce also attends. When you register a boat, I think every $5 goes into a fund. I forgot how that, that's not my end of it. I just know it's there. Okay.
Well, there might be an avenue then to, for funding. We just need to get a report or get our harbor commission involved.
Right. So we can get the GPS coordinates.
We can work on that. Okay. Just want to make sure this is. Okay. Onto item C. It's the discussion on the cost of yard waste removal off island and being closed entirely during fall and winter months.
Yep. Council President, member of the council. Just letting everyone know, we, we do accept yard waste on Prudence Island, the same as the mainland until December 31st. And we don't accept it again until March 15th. This is only a two and a half month timeframe. This is due to the open top containers that we have. Because you know, when it snows and rains on there, and we have the freezing thaw cycles, it makes it very difficult for our contractor to empty those containers up at the Johnson landfill. We do, so far to date, we've, uh, we removed three containers, and the cost for those three containers is an estimate of $1,100 per container. And this was due because we had a violation last year from DEM that we had yard waste on the ground that we're, it's not supposed to be on the ground, it's supposed to be in containers. So that was why we're starting to haul off our yard waste off of Prudence Island. If anyone has any questions?
Hap, anything?
No, I have nothing further on that. Obviously, Brian, you make a good point about the open container and freeze and thaw cycles and so forth. I can see that would be a nightmare in Johnston for sure. But my job was just to get the, the sentiment forwarded to you folks with feedback, and I appreciate your input.
We do have a, we do have a hand up. We're going to go over to Fred Stevenson. Fred, you stepped on mute. Okay.
Hi. Am I, are we unmuted?
You're unmuted. I just need that name and address.
Yeah. Hi, this is Karen Stevenson, 0542 Never Again City Avenue and 23 Baldwin Road, Road in Portsmouth. The other issue having to do with the yard waste is the very, very short time that there is avail, accessibility to the transfer station for disposal of yard waste. We're down to, not yet, but if by November, when most of our leaf and yard waste things need to be taken care of, we are down to two hours on Saturday and two hours on Sunday. So people are working during the week. That's an extremely short timeframe. And I don't know if there's any way to extend some of those hours, at least on the weekends, through the end of November or beginning of December, because it's just very difficult to manage disposal of, and if you have rain on a couple of those days, it, it just makes it absolutely impossible.
Council President?
Yes.
We, we did extend the hours. We used to close the, lower the hours of the transfer station on Columbus Day. We did extend the hours until the end of October, the beginning of November. And we, we did extend our hours to accommodate that. The thing is that if we extend any more hours for the transfer station, because the transfer station on Prudence Island is in my operational budget, it would have to be approved in July this coming year for next year, because the funds are already allocated for the, for the personnel over there for, uh, working the transfer station.
I mean, the, the issue is, I still unmute. Yeah, the issue is, and I, I don't know that we need the longer hours during the week as much, but I appreciate that there's some extra hours through the end of, of October, and that's helpful. But a lot of times, a lot of our leaves are not down yet. And so the, the November timeframe winds up being, you know, a, a challenge. So if we just, even just Saturdays and Sundays, a little bit longer through like the end of November, like after through the end of Thanksgiving, you know, or very beginning of December would be enormously helpful because it is, I mean, we made five trips with a pickup truck one time within two hours. We didn't put a dent in our leaves, and that was an enormous effort to try to do that. And it's much more difficult now that it all has to be set differently. We can't just do a tarp in the back of the truck and, and dump it. So it's, it's a, it's a very big problem.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Brian, we can look into that and, and see if we, what we can, we can look at some options to try to extend the hours. You know, that's something we can look at and get, and get back to you on. Um, you know, that's something we can look at, uh, and can get, and get back to you on.
Can we shorten or cancel some of the hours during the week to move into the weekend?
I mean, we, we, we could look at that and see if that would, I mean, I don't know if the people are, are, want, want to do that too, shorten the hours during the week. Because I, I'm not quite sure how they feel about that. Just for, just for.
There's less people over there during the week in this time of the year, right?
Well, except, I mean, it's only, I think in, in the winter between the, the weekend and it's only eight hours a week total. I think it's two hours Tuesday and Thursday and two hours Saturday and Sunday. So I do, I would be reluctant to cut back anymore on the weekday hours. I think if you were expanding, you, the expansion of just weekend hours, even if it was four hours instead of two, um, for a period of time would be, would be really, really helpful. Um, we, we have very short hours during the, during the winter.
The, the amount of people over there at this time of year would allow us to possibly not open on Tuesdays and do four hours on a Saturday.
Hmm.
Wouldn't there be more people there?
I, I have no idea how many people use it during the week and whether that would be, how much of a difficulty that would be. You'd have to speak to the, uh, transfer station attendant was, you know, how, how much that would be, you know, would that be a possibility?
Right, right now, that would probably be our, our best option to look at. Uh, note here to see if we can put, uh, the cost of the extended hours on the weekend. Cause it's a good point into the next operational budget, but any money to take, uh, any money that we apply to that would have to be taken somewhere else from the budget at this point.
Right.
Uh, right now, we're watching every penny because, uh, revenues, uh, has certainly been affected by COVID. So I promise you, uh, I'll talk to Ryan, we'll look at it. Uh, we would need some feedback, maybe Hap, uh, if you can give us some feedback regarding uh, what the sentiment would be if we restricted the hours during the weekday and made the hours longer weekend. That would be helpful.
I can.
And that would be for this year and then we'll try to address it next year.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I think Ms. Rossi? Just got to unmute Ms. Rossi.
Yes, um, I can tell you right now that a lot of people that live here during the full time, they go off on Saturdays and the weekends to do their shopping and whatnot. Because they can get ferry reservations easier because they're going against the weekend people that are coming this way. And the fact that we have two hours on Tuesday and two hours on Thursday, that's short enough. People do use it. Your survey is going to show that. And I think you're going to have bucks, you know, there's what, 120 something people here full time that do use it during the week, because on the weekend you have a lot more people going in and out and we don't want to get stuck in line. I mean, it takes forever and it's already shortened. If you need two extra hours, what if you shortened Portsmouth's schedule somewhere by two extra hours and give them to us?
Different funding formula. Portsmouth is paid for by the people who buy the stickers.
Well, we buy the stickers and we buy our trash bags.
And that's paid for within.
The operation.
DPW budget.
Uh, overwhelmingly supported by the tax, uh, base, whereas the Headley Station is 100% enterprise. So that's 100% funded by, uh, tax sales and tax, or correction, uh, sticker sales.
All right, I'm not an accountant and I'm not going to go into that. I am going to tell you that people use those two hours during the week. And that's all I'm going to say on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rossi. I mean, we, we do hear the comments, um, and we will look to see what we can do. Uh, I mean, we're looking at probably another eight weeks at the most, uh, eight to 10 weeks. So we'll, let us see what we can do, uh, and try to provide some, some, uh, some relief for you folks over there. Let, let us take a look at it and we'll, and we'll get back to you on it.
I don't know. Maybe you could do just one weekend while you had extended hours a month.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Uh, we'll look into it this week. You'll have an answer by the end of next week. Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll look at some options and, and if you have, I mean, those kind of comments, uh, or that kind of feedback is very helpful. Because, you know, that might be, you know, that might be a perfect solution is just to extend the hours for, you know, on, on one weekend, uh, during the month and, and we'll go from there. But, uh, um, no, that's, this is all good information. And, uh, I think collectively we can come up with a solution that, uh, that, that, that will, uh, help you out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, there's one question up there that's not on the agenda, but was a request for an update on the Mill, Mill Creek call.
Brian, who's cleared up? Uh, Brian, could you pick that?
Yeah, uh, I could talk about Mill Creek. Uh, Mill Creek Project, all our applications have been submitted to CRMC. Uh, we, we had one question from, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers about high tide area. So we, uh, we submitted that. We're anticipating approvals from CRMC, probably December, beginning of January for our approvals. We're anticipating going out to bid, uh, somewhere around February, March timeframe and award the contract sometime in this, in, uh, summer months for construction to begin right at the Labor Day when everything slows down over at Prudence. And then hopefully have it completed before the end of the year. So that's, that's where we stand right now with, uh, Mill Creek. We did, we did get the extension from our D, uh, DEM, our grant. So that was one good thing because it was running out, but we did get an extension for that, uh, for a completion of, uh, 2022.
Excellent. Thank you, Brian. Okay, um, is there anything else? Any, anything else that, uh, I'm not seeing any comments, questions? All right.
We got some questions here.
All right.
There's a, there's another question here for, I would like to address a few street issues. Not sure if this is the venue or DPW.
Oh, we can, we can, uh, we can take the question.
We, we, yeah, we can take a question, but we can't take action on it.
Right.
Or, or vote on it. Mr. Mr. Schress, if you want to type in it, type a question or get on. There he is.
Yeah, we got it. We got you up top, Mr. Schress. Uh, you could, okay, you're unmuted.
Hi, my name is Terry Charis and I live on, um, Daniel Avenue. And I just have a couple of questions. And again, like I said, I'm not sure if it's Portsmouth or if I have to go to DPW right over here. But if the, the conditions of Holbrook Avenue, Alice Street and Harriet are absolutely atrocious, I've seen them, grade them through the, um, summers and stuff. But when we get heavy rains like we just experienced last week and again last night, we get all these ruts and everything. And I, I didn't know if there's something more. Can some fill be brought in, some peystone, uh, graystone? I don't know what the answer is. But I can just tell you that they are really, really bad. And it doesn't matter what speed you go. I've actually seen kids trying to ride their bicycles down these streets. And, um, I fear for their safety that they're just going to get thrown off their bicycle and get hurt. And we also have a lot of adult cyclists as well.
Um, Terry, can I just get your, uh, address, please?
Uh, yes, it's, it's, um, 0143 Daniel Avenue.
Okay, um, I know, uh, we could have DPW take a look at it. Um, we do know that there have been, uh, reports, you know, from the island frequently, you know, over the years that, that with some of the gravel roads, this is, this is a problem, uh, during heavy rain events and things of that nature. So it is something that, uh, that DPW has dealt with. Um, Brian, do you have, uh, are you aware of any of these issues?
Uh, I, I can ask our guys over on Prudence Island, they could take a look at those roads. Uh, just to let everyone know, I mean, the town, we have two roads that are accepted by the town of Portsmouth. It's Broadway and Narragansett. Most of these roadways that she's talking about are not accepted public roads. I mean, we do maintain them. We do go out there and grade them and take care of them, but they are not our roadways. I mean, we try to do the best we can with what we have out there. But we will take, definitely take a look at it and see if we can, uh, straighten out all the ruts to make them safer traveling.
Thank you, Brian. So it is, we will look into it, uh, and see what, you know, see what we can, we can come up with.
All right.
Okay. So this is, please add Madison to that concerned list of washed out roads. Yep, it, it is something and, uh, and we'll look into this. We can't take any action today, but it is something we can look at. Just trying to speak up. No other. Was that? Back to Terry. Or is that the, right? Okay.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, 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 it's Terry Charis again. Uh, you said you're going to look into it and our, will, will there be a memo that gets sent out? How, how will we be notified that something is being addressed about this?
We'll, we'll get back through, uh, through the planning commission. We'll, we'll report back to Hap. That.
Okay. All right, so I can keep contact with Hap and he can let me know.
Yes.
You, you, excuse me, Council President, members of the council, uh, Ms. Schress, you, you can also call our office at 683-0362 and we can, uh, get your phone number and we can, uh, contact you back to let you know the situation too, if that, that works.
Okay, it's at the main number because you just rattled that off so fast. I didn't have any paper.
Oh, that's okay. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, it's our main office over here in Portsmouth, uh, area code 401.
Yeah.
683 0362.
Okay, okay. Okay, all right. And then what department would I ask?
Oh, you could just ask for Brian. Well, that's the Department of Public Works.
Okay, excellent. I agree. I appreciate that, Brian. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Well, we'll also keep you in the loop too, Pat, just so the planning commission knows what's going on as well.
Brian, should I give him your home phone too?
No, we give him yours.
All right. Um, I, I'm not seeing any other comments. Well, that was, that was everything on our agenda. So, uh, I do want to thank you all for participating. Does anybody have any comments?
I just wanted to give kudos to the town IT staff and the folks that are behind the scenes that are putting this whole Zoom technology together. You guys have been doing a killer job with this. This is an excellent venue and clearly is working very well. Once the participants can figure out how to unmute themselves.
It, it is something, you know, I, I mean, sometimes when, uh, when, when these situations happen and, and, you know, I, I think a lot of, even though we're in a, a pandemic, I think a lot of, uh, a lot of things have come out of this that have provided municipalities opportunities to, you know, to figure out new ways to, to, to conduct business. Uh, these Zoom meetings, um, we've all probably been a part of a Zoom meeting or a Teams meeting or, or something. And they're not perfect, but, but they do provide a venue for us to conduct our business. Um, it's not ideal, but, uh, it does, it does provide us that opportunity to keep doing our business, uh, to get feedback. I, I think we probably might get a little more participation during these types of meetings because people are able to, to chime in. So I, I, you know, not that I, uh, you know, I don't, I would love to see everybody back in front of us, but, uh, short of that, I, I do think this is a great opportunity for us to, to, uh, conduct our business to, to get the message out to the residents and to, and to interact. So it, it is one of the brighter spots.
Yep.
The commute time is certainly better.
Yeah, it took me, how long did it take you to get into that room?
Well, I had to get my coffee first, Kevin, so that, that did.
Less, less time than it took them to tie the bow tie.
Uh, no, no, Keith, I go to sleep with this on.
That doesn't surprise me, Mark.
Well, thank you all.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded. All those in favor?
Zuzi Fusa?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzen?
Thank you, everyone, and aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Kelly is out there.
Oh, Mr. Kelly, sorry. Okay.
Snuck in.
Yeah.
Andrew, oh, thank you all. Uh, motion passes six to zero. And, uh, we will see you all, uh, at our next meeting on, uh, the 26th.
Very good. Have a good weekend, everybody.
Have a good day. Bye bye.
You too. Take care.